This conference will now be recorded. Good evening and welcome to the September 6, 2023 Southway Hall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We have all Commissioners present this evening. At this time, I'd like to ask you all to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the Southway Hall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to the township website for public access. At this time, I'd like to ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to please review our public virtual meeting rules.
Thank you. The public virtual meeting rules are as follows. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized and move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference during the meeting. Chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring go-to meeting will then unmute your microphone and you will have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I'd also like to announce that the Board of Commissioners met an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. Moving on to Agenda Item D, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for the following individuals. Former Southway Hall Township Chief of Police Donald McDonald, who passed on August 18, 2023. Former Southway Hall Township Officer Scott Allen Smith, who passed on August 16, 2023. And former Director of Lehigh County Emergency Management, John Kalnitch, who passed on Sunday, August 27, 2023. Thank you. Moving on to presentations, we have recognition of Mr. Larry Hillenbrand by Greenwald's Fire Rescue Chief Andrew Gager.
All right. I invite Mr. Larry Hillenbrand to come forward here. Stand right over there. Put you on the spot. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here on behalf of the officers and members of Greenwalds tonight, as well as yourselves, to help present a recognition to a member of our community who certainly went above and beyond to help his neighbor in their time of need. In the world we live in today, people are far more likely to get out their phone and film something bad that's going on rather than help to render aid to somebody in need. On the contrary, on the afternoon of August 21, Mr. Larry Hillenbrand heard his neighbor's calls for help. He quickly determined that his neighbor was trying to notify the fire department that she had a fire in her kitchen. He quickly sprang into action. He grabbed fire extinguishers from his own home and without any regard for his own safety, he ran up the block and entered the house that was beginning to fill with smoke. He made his way to the kitchen where he located the fire and he was able to use his fire extinguishers to contain the fire until the fire department arrived. His actions certainly prevented a much greater loss of property for his neighbor. It also certainly protected the lives of all of the rest of the occupants in the attached dwellings. So for that, we've prepared a certificate for you, Mr. Hillenbrand, which I'll read to you now. The Southway Hall Township Board of Commissioners and Greenwalds Fire Department would like to recognize Southway Hall Township resident Larry Hillenbrand. We say thank you for going above and beyond for your fellow neighbor while exhibiting exceptional courage and concern. Your decisive actions taken on August 21, 2023, without regard for your own safety, most certainly prevented significant harm and loss to your neighbor's property as well as the other residents in the attached dwellings. We commend you for this honorable act of service. I did not know Mr. Hillenbrand prior to this day, but I can certainly say he's a man of great humility. He did not do this for any sort of recognition. He just helped his neighbor because it was the right thing to do. So congratulations, Mr. Hillenbrand. You got two new fire extinguishers.
Thank you, Chief Gager, for that presentation. And Mr. Hillenbrand, we commend you for your bravery and your service to our community. Moving on to Agenda Item Four, courtesy of the floor, this is opportunity for any member of the public to approach the board with any comments on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone present this evening who'd like to comment to the board? Is there anyone online, Dave, with any comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Five, the approval of our meeting minutes. We have two sets of minutes that have been distributed to the board in advance for your review. First are the August 16, 2023 Board of Commissioner meeting minutes. Are there any comments or questions on this agenda? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. A second set of minutes are the August 21, 2023 Board of Commissioners Special Meeting Minutes. Again, any comments or questions from the board? Do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to ordinances, Ordinance 6A, we have a public hearing and ordinance amending the Southway Hall Township zoning ordinance by amending Section 350-42H height exceptions and providing for a severability clause, retention of rights to enforce clause, a repealer clause, and an effective date. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to our township solicitor, Mr. Zader.
Thank you, Madam President. The purpose of any public hearing is to, first of all, inform the public and to provide an opportunity for public comment. I now declare this public hearing to be open. Procedure we're going to follow is going to be, after I finish the preliminary information, there'll be a staff presentation regarding the ordinance that's proposed. There'll be an opportunity for comments and questions from the Board of Commissioners, followed by comments, questions from the audience. I would note that the legal requirements under the Municipal Planning Code, First Class Township Code, Sunshine Act have been followed. Specifically, the matter's been referred to the Township Planning Commission for consideration, the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission for consideration. Both those agencies have provided comment. All's been done within the required time periods. The necessary notices and advertising have occurred as well. And all that information is on file with the township. That being said, I'll now turn it over to staff for an explanation of the ordinance itself.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is an amendment to zoning ordinance Section 350-42H height exceptions. This will be clarifying that section with regard to the permitted maximum prohibited height that any building or structure is allowed to exceed within any zoning district. We are currently looking at a maximum height of 140% of the building height of the principal building. The existing section is not clear. There's some ambiguity to that, so this ordinance amendment will clarify that and correct it. This was seen by the Planning Commission over several meetings. It was recommended for adoption in the May 18, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. June 7, 2023, the Board of Commissioners directed staff to send the draft to the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission for their review period. They did indeed review that, and they commented on June 8. And they had no unfavorable comments. In fact, their main comment was that this amendment demonstrates the evolution and adaptivity of government. And as the solicitor has stated, this hearing was advertised in the Parkland Press edition on August 16 and 23.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the Board of Commissioners at this time? Hearing none. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to be heard on this matter, whether it be statements or questions? Going once, going twice? No one has indicated an interest in speaking about this matter. The public hearing now closed. And if it's the board's pleasure, this has been advertised for possible adoption should you wish to entertain a motion to that effect.
Thank you. Are there any further comments or questions from the board? Do we have a motion to amend said ordinance amending Section 350-42H height exceptions?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 6B, second ordinance, public hearing and ordinance amending the Southway Hall Township zoning ordinance by adding Section 350-13F zoning certificate of use and providing for a severability clause, retention of rights to enforce clause, a repealer clause, and an effective date. Again, I will turn this hearing over to Attorney Zader.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Since everyone was here for the last one, this will seem like deja vu, but I'll declare this public hearing now open. I'll note for the record that the required preliminaries per the Municipal Planning Code, the First Class Township Code, and the Sunshine Act have been followed with respect to advertising notice and the like. That information is on file with township should they're being interested in looking into that. I would note that the procedure we're going to follow is an opportunity for staff to present, to explain the proposed ordinance, followed by comments and questions from the Board of Commissioners, and then finally comments and questions by those in attendance, whether it be in person or virtually. That said, I'll now turn it back over to staff to explain the ordinance that's from the board for consideration.
Thank you. This is to be an added tool in the township's toolbox. I view the zoning certificate of use as a corollary to the certificate of occupancy, which some of us are aware of. The Building Code, once a building or structure has met all of the requirements, is issued a certificate of occupancy. This will allow any use in the township, once it has met all the zoning requirements, to be issued a certificate of use. The ordinance itself establishes what the certificate is, the conditions under which it may be issued, and any penalties and situations under which penalties can be levied if it is not fulfilled. So basically speaking, the Planning Commission reviewed this twice, and at their April 20, 23 meeting, they did recommend it for adoption. It was then transmitted to the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission where they reviewed it. And on their June 23, 2023 letter, once again, they had no issues with it. They made a similar statement of this demonstrates the evolution and adaptability of government. The hearing, tonight's hearing, was advertised in the Parkland Press edition of the East Penn Press on August 16 and August 23, 2023.
Thank you, Greg. Does any member of the Board of Commissioners have any questions or comments regarding this proposed ordinance? There are none. Is anyone in the public, whether it be sitting here or virtually, would anyone like to comment or ask a question about this proposed ordinance? None, either virtually or in person, have indicated. So I will now close this public hearing. And Madam President, should you wish to entertain a motion, that would be appropriate.
Thank you, Attorney Zader. If there are no further questions or comments from the board, do I have a motion to adopt an ordinance amending zoning ordinance by adding Section 350-13F?
Still moved.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Seven, Resolution 7A, we have a resolution granting a waiver of certain subdivision and land development ordinance review and approval requirements for a plan entitled Proposed ATM Kiosk, Tillman Square Shopping Center. And I'll ask our planner, Greg Adams, to present.
Thank you. This is an application to further develop the property located at 4680 Broadway. The application proposes the removal of 10 parking spaces. Yes. In order to construct a drive-up ATM kiosk on a 0.0382 acre portion of the 33.778 acre property. The property is zoned Highway Commercial 1, HC1, special height limitation, served by public water and sewer. The owner is Tillman Square Associates LP. The applicant is PW Campbell Contracting Company. The applicant requests that the approval of the waiver from land development application. Staff has no objections to the waivers requested or the approval of the application. I do want to note that the applicant has signed the acceptance of conditions.
Thank you, Greg. I'll open it up to the board. Are there any comments or questions? I'm having a technical difficulty here. My computer has turned off. Is it possible to... Mine did. Is it possible to turn on the... Thank you. While I'm waiting for my computer, we can continue the meeting. Are there any board questions? Tony, did you have any comments for the board?
No, that's fine. No, this application went through the PC. It was recommended by the Planning Commission. There are a number of waivers, which is common to this type of application, small application. They requested a couple, a number of waivers, which is really just things that are, would be normal with this plan. So we would recommend all the waivers, and we have no engineer objection if you choose to move this forward.
Thank you. Are there any public comments or questions on this agenda item? Nothing online. Hearing and hearing, no comments from the board or from the public. Do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
Make a motion.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 7B, we have a resolution granting a waiver of certain subdivision and land development ordinance review and approval requirements for a plan entitled Broadway Sidewalk Grading Plan for Tillman Square Shopping Center. Again, I'll ask our planner, Greg Adams, to present.
Thank you. This is an application to further develop property, once again, at 4680 Broadway. The applicant proposes the construction of a sidewalk along Broadway on a 0.1198 acre portion of the 33.778 acre property. Property is still zoned Highway Commercial 1, is served by public water and sewer. The owner and applicant is Tillman Square Associates LP. The applicant does request, once again, an approval of the waiver from land development application, and staff has no objections to the waivers or deferrals requested and to the approval of the application. Once again, the applicant has signed the acceptance of condition approvals.
Thank you, Greg. Before I open to the Commissioners for comment, I'll again ask our township engineer if you have any comments on this.
Thank you. Again, very similar. It followed the same path as the last application. This is to add sidewalk, which was a call-in. We recommend approval of this, as well as the waivers as listed in our letter. Again, small application, it's a large property, so a lot of these have to do with not providing the entire plan set for just the sidewalk itself. So we would recommend the waivers as we listed in our letter.
Very good, Tony. Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any comments or questions from the board on this agenda item? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said resolution? I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Resolution 7C, we have a resolution granting preliminary final approval to a minor plan entitled 1708 Hillside Lot Line Adjustment Plan. And Greg, if you would present.
Sure. Thank you. This is an application to adjust the lot line between 1708 Hillside Lane and 1742 Evangate Drive. The plan proposes to transfer 7,733 square feet of property from 1742 Evangate Drive to 1708 Hillside Lane, resulting in 1742 Evangate Drive containing 9,601 square feet and 1708 Hillside Lane containing 49,470 square feet. The parcel is, both parcels are served by public water and sewer and are zoned medium density R4. Borko Milasev is the owner of 1708 Hillside Lane and the applicant. Michael and Cynthia Salustio are the owners of 1742 Evangate Drive. The Planning Commission did review and recommend preliminary plan approval to the Board of Commissioners at their August 17, 23 meeting. They did have eight conditions and two favorably recommended waiver requests. Three conditions typical to the approving resolutions have been added. Three conditions have already been addressed and were removed. The applicant requests preliminary final plan approval, and staff has no objections.
Thank you, Greg. And Tony, did you have any comments for the board on this resolution?
No, this is a lot line, very simple lot line adjustment. It was reviewed by the Planning Commission with favorable recommendations. There's been further work with the engineer to clean out the plans, so we have no objection with moving this forward.
Very good. Thank you. The board, if there are any comments or questions on this matter? Any from the public? Questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 7D, a resolution granting preliminary final approval to a minor plan entitled Joseph and Haley Zimmering. And Greg, if you would present.
Thank you. This is an application to consolidate the properties located at 1862 Stone Tavern Boulevard, 1884 Stone Tavern Boulevard, and 1900 Penn's Crossing. The plan proposes to consolidate the three lots into one 79,777 square foot lot containing 533 linear feet of frontage along the Penn's Crossing and Stone Tavern Boulevard. The parcel is served by public water and sewer and is zoned low-density R2. Joseph and Haley Zimmering are the owners and applicants. At their August 17, 2023 meeting, the Planning Commission reviewed and recommended preliminary final plan approval to the Board of Commissioners, subject to the applicant complying with eight conditions. There was also one favorably recommended waiver request. Three conditions typical to the approving resolutions have been added, and one condition so far has been addressed and removed. The applicant requests preliminary final plan approval, and staff has no objections. Once again, the applicant has signed the acceptance of conditions.
Thank you, Greg. And Tony, I'll ask again if you have any engineering comments.
No problem. I sound like a broken record. So again, this is a lot line adjustment. It was reviewed, favorable approval by the Planning Commission, and the applicant has been working with our office to clean out their plans. We have no objection with moving this forward with the one waiver.
Very good. Thank you. Ask if there's any board comment or question? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
Make a motion.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'm recusing myself. Thank you.
Very good. So we have motion approved, four yes votes and one abstention. Moving on to Agenda Item 7E, we have a resolution extending the conditional preliminary final approval granted to a major plan entitled Proposed Parking Lot Improvements, 798 Hausmann Road. Greg, if you'd present.
Thank you, yes. This is an application to further develop the property located at 798 Hausmann Road. The plan proposes the construction of a new driveway aisle and elimination of 13 parking spaces, stormwater management improvements, and the installation of a new water line, all on a 0.81 acre portion of the 6.072 acre site. The subject property is zoned IC1, Industrial Commercial 1. Lehigh Valley Health Network is the owner and applicant. Board of Commissioners granted conditional preliminary final plan approval back on February 17, 2021, with 12 conditions. At the February 20, I'm sorry, February 2, 2022, February 15, 2023, March 15, 2023, and June 7, 2023 meetings, the Board of Commissioners issued extensions to the conditional approval. The applicant is requesting additional time to complete the research of an easement in the question, the execution of the easement, and the completion of the agreements for the remaining conditions of approval. The applicant is requesting a one-month extension to October 19, 2023. Staff is recommending a three-month extension to December 21, 2023. The applicant, to date, has satisfied six of the 12 conditions of approval. Two are legal protections. One is requirement to record the plan in 12 months. Therefore, only three are left unaddressed. One of those includes the requirement to settle all open invoices when not, and that's usually not confirmed until just before the plan's being recorded. I do want to state that I do not have an acceptance of approval yet. I believe the applicant's team is here, if you have any questions. And once they have made their presentation and you're ready to vote, then we can address the acceptance of conditions.
Thank you, Greg.
Greg, I just have a quick question. And maybe it's what I have up in front of me. You indicated that the applicant, to date, has satisfied, you said six of the 12 conditions. I'm reading seven.
That's correct.
And the other were three, and you said two. So what?
Right.
What is correct?
Mine was correct. I did err. There was the condition for the easement, which, there was a decision that had been satisfied. And then, once we actually got into this additional water line issue, then we decided that we did need, what, an eight-by-eight foot easement.
So the question is, the applicant's aware of that?
That's, that is what he's asking to research.
Yes. Want to be sure that everybody's all on the same page.
Very good. And Tony, did you have any engineering comments on this?
I apologize. We are actually conflicted out of this, so I'm sorry I can't speak to that.
Not a problem. Thank you very much. Can you put the microphone on, please?
My apologies.
Thank you.
Anthony Burke, on behalf of the applicant. We do have a representative from the Health Network available by phone if needed. However, we didn't bring one in person because none of these questions really pertain to issues. So we did successfully complete the water separation that we were requesting time for previously, so that's done. So the primary concern of the township is now moot and that that's been completed successfully. Following that, in order to satisfy the easement requirement, we had our project engineer start to prepare the legal description. In doing that, he found a copy of a recorded plan from 2006 that had an overlapping easement, which would already grant the township authority, the rights that were being requested under easement. We didn't want to record a potentially conflicting or duplicative easement if there was one in already in place, so we've conducted research to determine whether that's in case. We did run a title search. The title search reveals a number of historic easements that favor the township authority, none of which appear to pertain to the 2006 plan that was recorded. So we don't find that, we can't find anything that indicates there was an actual easement recorded to match that 2006 plan that was attached as Exhibit A to our letter. So we think that we're going to be back to just doing a new easement. So that's where we're at. We requested one month because we don't think it'll take that long to button it up. If you want to give us longer, that's, you know, just to avoid having to come back. But all that's really required now is we just need to get the township solicitor the legal description so they can prepare the easement and an opinion of title, and then just wrap the agreements up. So that's the nature of the request. We're at least glad that the physical problem that we've been dealing with for the past year has been resolved.
Excellent. Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Yes, Commissioner Osborn?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. So Tony from the Pitcock Company mentioned that they're conflicted out of this. So my question really is to Tom, is there a need for engineering review other than Pitcock to?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Board comments or questions? Any comments or questions from the public? Nothing online? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is? He said he's, in agreement to the three months.
Three months, right?
So December 21, 2023?
Yes.
Very good. So to clarify, do we have a motion to approve said resolution extending to December 21, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item 8A, motions. We have a motion for the Residential Municipal Solid Waste Collection Disposal and Recycling Services Contract commencing January 1, 2024. Consideration of award of contract. I'll turn it over to our Township Manager, Tom Richard G.
Thank you. On Wednesday, July 26, 2023, Township officials opened and read aloud the Residential Municipal Solid Waste Collection Disposal and Recycling Services Contract, which would commence on January 1, 2024. Just as a refresher, the current hauler waste management did not, was not inclined to do another one-year extension on the current existing contract. So we received that notice earlier this year. We had to go out to bid. And now we are, as a township, evaluating this bid. So before you or in, in the packet was included refuse to recycling projections based on 2024 bid figures, the bid tabulation, and the municipal pricing comparison spreadsheet, as well as the information for, for the sticker program and toters. So the options are really boiled down to as follows. You could accept the three-year bid. Waste Management has submitted a complete bid and is the low bidder for that option. You could accept a five-year bid. JP Mascaro has submitted a complete bid and is the low bidder for that option. Or you could reject the bids entirely and rebid. Deadline for action is, is this evening because you had 45 days to render decision by way of official action on the bid. The deadline is Saturday, September 9, with the last scheduled meeting between, between now and that timeframe being this evening. So getting to a recommendation after consideration of staff and all of the factors that were submitted as part of the bid. Basically, Township staff feels that the overall factors that will contribute to an overall lower solid waste recycling contract decrease in the overall program would be the ones that are in your control or population, loss or gain, changes in recycling activities and volumes, so increasing your recycling, increasing solid waste reduction programs, addition of recycling drop-off facilities, diversion of recyclable materials, as well as realizing efficiencies in solid waste recycling, recycling collection activities. Realizing that in the context of this bid, these are things that would, that would take a longer time to change or to, to, to implement, the recommendation is to award the, the five-year long-term contract to JP Mascaro so as to effectively manage future price increase. And that recommendation is, is also made with recognizing the significant unknowns with respect to the solid waste management industry over the next several years related to projected reduced landfill capacity in the immediate region, increased disposal of solid waste volumes based on population growth and consumer, consumer habits, decreased marketability, decreased marketability of recycling materials, inflation, and increased capital cost. The total five-year bid with Mascaro is $21,634,536. So it would recommend you award in that total amount over the five years, as well as to accept the applicant's price schedule for stickers and carts. It is also recommended at the same time that the Board of Commissioners direct management and staff to commence the process of selecting a third-party consultant and to seek a recycling technical assistance program grant from the Department of Environmental Protection in order to evaluate the overall solid waste recycling and yard waste program from, from a comprehensive perspective, including we are not limited to an independent evaluation of alternative solid waste recycling and yard waste programs, review by way of an independent analysis of the optimization of the solid waste recycling collection system method, including number of collection days, collection routes, waste and recycling route workload, tonnages, and the various time metrics associated with the collection, travel units per day, and non-service time, as well as the, reviewing the recommended methods of discussing and increasing educational awareness of solid waste recycling program alternatives. Again, following any questions and review and discussion by the board. However, for this, for this contract evaluation, would recommend the five-year to JP Mascaro. And it would, the contract, the contractor, I should say, would need to meet all the requirements of the contract with respect to performance bonds and any and all other listed requirements to the, to the awarded vendor.
Very good. Thank you very much for that presentation, Tom. And thank you to all staff involved in preparing the initial bid and compiling all the information in a format for this board to review. And we did hold a special meeting on August 21 where we heard from both of the bidders and reviewed an awful lot of information at that time. So I'm going to open it up to the board for comments or questions at this time as we consider our, award of our contract. Any questions?
I just have a quick comment. After the meeting on the 21st, I was, we own apartments in Bridgeport, Pennsylvania. And you guys were collecting, JP Mascaro was collecting trash. And one of the gentlemen kind of missed a truck and he picked up every piece of trash on the street and threw it in the van or in his truck. And I went over to him and I said, that was impressive. And I, and I told him who I was. And, and I said that you guys were at the meeting. And he said, oh, were you with JP? I said, no. I said, so the long story short was if we get any kind of service like that in South Whitehall Township, it would be very impressive because I was, I was impressed by that. So as I said before, at the last meeting, my recommendation is to go with JP Mascaro for five years.
I do have a couple of comments. First of all, I'll concur with our manager's recommendation and also what Commissioner Kennedy just said with going with the five-year contract as opposed to the three-year. But there's two other points I want to address. First, what Tom said, I do think that the board should provide direction to the staff to select or engage a third-party consultant to evaluate our municipal solid waste procedures as a whole. There's obviously a lot of issues at, at play in the trash and recycling industry. The impacts of inflation have certainly been felt. And also just the, the regional considerations of the fact that we're running out of landfill space in the region and that's only going to put pressures on the costs to go up. So I think, hopefully, that if we are to engage a third-party consultant, come up with a plan, if we're able to educate our residents on the importance of recycling, of producing less municipal solid waste, that when we come to the end of this contract, we'll have a new innovative approach for our residents, not just the same thing that we've been doing for years and years, and perhaps something that not every municipality does. But if we're able to be policy innovators at the end of this contract, to go out on our own and implement some changes for the benefit of our residents, not just for the waste that they produce, which has an adverse impact on local environment and the environment as a whole, but potentially to, to reduce costs for them and, and prevent another situation like we're in tonight, where the price of the contract, regardless of who we go with, will increase due to larger forces at play. So my recommendation in line with Commissioner Kennedy's would be to award the five-year contract to JP Mascaro. And I appreciate you telling the, the story of the, the quality service that, that you observed. And I certainly hope that's the level of service, you know, that we get in South Whitehall. I understand that in any, with any hauler, there's going to be issues. It's just, it would have, it's what happens in, in the routine delivering of, of those services to the community. But, but I will say that, you know, as an elected official, and I've heard this from a lot of people, a lot of people not necessarily aren't upset if, if there's an issue and then it's rectified and then it's fine. But if there's repeat chronic issues in particular areas or neighborhoods. So I do think whichever way the board decides to go with awarding the contract, whoever we award the contract to, we should fully enforce the provisions of the contract, make sure that any repeat conduct that falls short of the requirements in the contract is addressed and rectified for the benefit of our residents. So that they know when they put out their trash and recycling, that's collected on time, that's collected in a clean manner. It's the service they pay for and with what residents in South Whitehall pay, certainly they, they deserve nothing but the best. So that all, if there's any other board comments, but my recommendation would be to award the five-year contract to JP Mascaro.
Excuse me. Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Roth and Commissioner Kennedy. I have, I agree with all of your comments so far. Concur. I do have a question regarding the board's thoughts on the additional information in our packet regarding the implementation of a senior low-income program. Now, Tom, did you want to review that at this time for us?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. So basically, during the Monday, August 21, Board of Commissioners special meeting, a question was asked to whether the township or how the township could implement a senior low-discount program. So I went through, per the current U.S. Census, Census data, there are 5,286 people over the age of 65 living in, in South Whitehall Township of an estimated population of 20,898. So that, that factors in the five-year estimated, estimated figures for 2021. There are 88,139 total households with 44.2% of the households comprised of individuals over the age of 65. So that's approximately 33,597 households. 17.1% of the township has total household income of equal or less to 35,999. So applying that percentage, that equates to about 615 households that may be in need or, or could utilize potentially a senior discount program. So if you were to offer a $30 per quarter discount, that equates to $100 per billing unit or approximately 73,800, which you would have to account for in, in the budget for '24. So program guidelines or parameters are, are provided as follows. The program should be limited to those customers 65 years of age or older to be verified by a driver's license or passport. It could be limited to only those that, that are the property owner or the person primarily responsible for the payment of the solid waste recycling fee to the township. And then it's recommended that to verify gross annual household income. If, if the household qualifies for the Pharmaceutical Assistance Contract for the Elderly Programs Program or PACE sponsored by the Commonwealth, that's, then that, they would be eligible for the discount in the township. So for reference, the current guidelines for income excluding the annual Medicare Part B payment for the, for single, and, single households and the married couples, you know, in total income for the year would, is 33,500 or less for a single person and 41,500 or less for a married couple. That's the current guidelines, which of course would be subject possibly to be changing in '24. But that way, it's a consistent way of evaluating the household income and to confirm compliance with the program. But due to the numbers of seniors that currently reside in the township, it's not recommended to implement a blanket senior discount program that does not also integrate a low-income requirement as well. For, for clarification, this program would be done at the time that you set the fee schedule for, for this, for 2024. So you wouldn't have to take action on this tonight. But, and it wouldn't factor into the bid at all because it wasn't part of the bid.
Very good. Thank you. I did have one question. So this would be an administrative duty of the township and do we have a designated person who would be responsible for confirming and adjusting?
Yeah, we, we do have a reci, a solid waste and recycling coordinator. So that, that duty would go to that person to be overseen by the Finance Director and Township Manager and Director of Operations.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Osborn?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Kelly. I'd like to start out by recognizing that Commissioner Roth has joined the group of commissioners with glasses. It's the first time I've noticed that. But seriously, with respect to the bidders for this particular contract, this to me is a clarion call. The increase in the cost of waste disposal is going to hit residents hard. They may not realize that until they get their first bill of the year. And I say that with respect because your business is a tough business. All eyes are on you from the regulatory agencies to the residents where your trucks come down the road to their home and in our neighborhoods. You can't do what you do without eyes on you and it's got to be a tough business. So I say that with respect, but I also, if you remember, one of the questions that I've asked in, in our last meeting is what can you suggest that we do as residents to help ourselves in, in trying to bend the curve so that we understand what are habits, how they contribute to the cost of the need, you know, for, for a bid like this? And I hope that you're willing to engage, you know, at the level that you feel is appropriate with our township staff to, as you, as we heard, we may consider a third-party to help us understand this issue. And I, I think you're in the best position, waste disposal industry, in the best position to educate the consumer on our habits. And it still keeps you in business, but it also is respectful of the environment and, and what we're all facing going forward. This is, this is not going to go, go away. What I, I'm really encouraged to hear that our board will consider an evaluation of waste disposal in general so that a number of years ahead of time, the future board is not sitting here with another such increase or even greater because we haven't done anything, because we haven't taken the time to understand what are habits, how they affect us. So one of the advantages that South Whitehall has is that we have a township manager and a, a director who are on the top of their profession. And I have a lot of confidence, all the confidence in the world, that we will do the best job we can in South Whitehall to help all of us going forward in this particular field. It's significant. It really is. It's, it's synonymous to estimated 33% tax increase, if you want to put it in terms of that. If it were in terms of school board increases, 9%, this will get people's attention. It's not your fault. It's, it's the way it is in the world today. And so that, that's, those are my comments. This is a clarion call for all of us. And if you could help us, help ourselves, I would appreciate it personally. So thank you, Commissioner Kelly.
Of course. Thank you for your comments. No other board comments at this time. I'll open up to the public. Sheriff, if you'd come up to the microphone, please, and please state your name and address for the record. Good evening. Turn the microphone on and if you give us your, there you go. And give us your name and address, please.
Yes, it's Janet Reiner, 2028 Brickyard Road in Allentown. And I came here to tonight to dissuade you from using waste management because of the issues that my neighbor and I have had over the past year with waste management. Recently, the recycling driver who over the past year has been giving my neighbor who at, who was alive at the time, he's now deceased, 96 years old, stroke victim hospice, lives a quarter of a mile back in the woods. And for the time we've had our recycling containers, 30 years, I don't know, he's always had them in the same spot. Well, this driver decided he wasn't going to pick it up. He threw it halfway down the hill. We live on a hill. I retrieved it. He jumped it on the railroad tracks. I had just had foot surgery. I had to retrieve that hobbling over in the mud in January. He has given us nothing but grief and aggravation. I've called, I've complained, never get a reply. So he came and he pulled his recycling truck onto the railroad tracks and then got out and started taking pictures. So I went out. I was So I went out, I was just walking down my sidewalk, he said, "Get back in your house, shut your mouth, and mind your own business." He said, "Youse people in South Whitehall Township think you're so proper," he said, "and privileged, and that we should be grateful that they pick up our trash and recycling." Well, I had a few words back, "Nothing mean," but I expressed to him that I pay for this service and I expect this service. Well, I filed complaints with waste management and the township, and I hadn't heard anything, so another week went by, and finally I get a manager out. But I want to tell you how privileged I am. I've lived in South Whitehall Township my entire life, born and raised, went to Parkland High School. I earn $25,453 a year. I use a quarter to a half a bag of waste a week, and about a quarter of the container of recycling a week. But I pay the same amount as a family of eight. Does that seem fair? No. Other townships, and I went on social media, went on to Nextdoor Neighbor app, went on to Facebook, got tons of remarks about their waste, their people or, or how waste management treated them, how husbands were almost in fistfights with drivers on waste management trucks. I have them in my phone if you'd like to look on Nextdoor Neighbor app. But it's, it's just ridiculous that we have to pay so much. I'm so thankful to hear you say about a senior discount. Other townships and boroughs have senior discounts. They get a discount, they have reduced prices. My sister lives in Whitehall, has waste management, and still pays less than we do for her trash. That I see, I think is unfair. And, and I just wanted to say that I just think that we need to be treated better by our waste management people than the trash that they pick up. I think we deserve better in our township. I just wanted also to say that I think changing from waste management would be an excellent idea, and I'm all for that, but, and the, so the senior citizen discount would be wonderful, and it would help any of us senior citizens on a very fixed income who are trying to get by, keeping our homes, keeping our taxes paid, keeping our water, who's now gone up, getting that paid. We all just want to pay our bills, and we want to be able to pay our bills. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Reiner. Sheriff, if you'd come up to the microphone, give us your name and address, please.
Uh, my name's Chris Pieschel. I encourage you to select a five-year contract so that people have an idea of what the cost is going to be downstream. The gentleman, when they made their presentations, talked about how the cost of disposing of trash is going to go up, so having that five-year gives the people an opportunity to understand a little bit longer before the inevitable rise in prices, five years or whatever we just like. That's why I encourage the five years. The senior discount, I think, is a great idea. I would also ask that you consider a discount for paying it all at one time in January. This eases the administrative backend for the rest of the year, so there is some cost saving, probably not to offset the total discount, but encourage people to pay upfront and then lessening reminders and all the other stuff has to get sent out down the road. Last thing is customer service, and as Commissioner Roth stated, that the township staff hold the, whoever you pick, feet to the fire, because we pay a hefty sum for a service, like, they provide a service. And for the haulers, just so you know, like, people say it's trash. A number of years ago, Detroit Fire Department and their trash haulers went on strike, and the citizens of Detroit demanded they settle the trash hauler's contract first for the fire department. That's how important trash pickup is, right? I, I did read in the paper, they had an issue over in Hanover in Lake County. According to the reporter, you handled it appropriately with your employee. It was comforting to hear Commissioner Kennedy say that your employee did the right thing when something went wrong, and, and I hope that continues if you're the elected trash hauler. But definitely holding whoever you choose accountable to the residents for the service that they're paying, I think is extremely important. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Pieschel. Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
Dave Torrey, 1351 Deerfield Drive. As you know, I've had 44 years in transportation operations and safety, federal motor carrier safety standards, and also had six and a half years in hazardous waste disposal, roll-offs, pan floor trailers, and back trucks. The, I beg to differ from some people here. When Advanced Disposal took over after Mascaro, it was night and day. The equipment standards that Advanced Disposal was using with true bucket, true bucket, you know, lifted, not manpower, not people jumping off the back of trucks and riding trucks down Cedar Crest Boulevard Hill and hanging off with one hand, like the Mascaro trucks were doing. Do we have specific equipment and safety standards so we're comparing apples to apples between Waste Management or Hoop, or Republic, or Mascaro?
Yes, this requires an automated truck, so what you described should not be occurring.
Yeah, okay, because the equipment standards from Advanced Disposal and Waste Management, what I've seen of Mascaro's trucks, I'd like to see a DOT inspection sometime on those, some of those trucks.
We have age requirements in the trucks, for the trucks as well, that we built into the bid.
One of the major carriers that, that we used in the hazardous waste business was based in New Jersey, and he also had a, a home disposal, trash disposal business, separate division. And I was over at their headquarters, and I understand that one of the maintenance, big maintenance problems with trash trucks is that they're applying the brakes every hundred feet, and the brake adjustment issue is a real major issue in the trash disposal as compared to regular trucking. So I hope we have, you know, the equipment standards, they're enforced, we don't have guys jumping off trucks and throwing the, our bins, but as long as we have apples-to-apples standards and compliance with federal motor carrier safety, I'll support it. But otherwise, I had some real concerns because I, what I've seen from Republic, Advanced Disposal, Waste Management versus Mascaro, there's a whole bunch of difference in equipment standards. But if you can address that in the contract, then I would say, okay, but that's got to be enforced. We have a commercial vehicle enforcement division in the police department, too, that we could do it. Thank you.
To Mr. Torrey's-
Thank you for your comments.
-question, I, I think part of that issue goes to what I raised earlier, was the issue of enforcing the contract. As our township manager said, you know, there's a requirement in there that we use automated trucks, but if we're not enforcing it as a township, chances are, they're not going to be used. So I think that's on us, and I appreciate you raising that point, that, that's on the township's part to make sure that, that part of the contract is enforced. And to Ms. Reiner's point, you know, certainly there's the option of contacting the hauler and the township, but the, the best way, really, another option for having your voice heard is, is to do what you did tonight and come before us. The, the stories that you share, I, I think it's important that we hear those, that everyone hear those in, in public session, because those, those do factor into the, not, into the way that, that we approach staff and, and provide them with direction to address certain issues. So I want to thank you for sharing your comment, and of course, if, if you or your neighbors or anyone else you know has, has other comments, as I know you referenced, feel free to tell them to attend a meeting, or our emails are on the township website. We'd love to hear those stories because they're important, and if nobody raises the issue with us, we won't be able to go to staff and provide them with direction, but thank you.
Well said, and I'll ask our township manager if you would, if you have it handy. I know part of our bid was to have a designated customer service line available.
Correct. Yeah, dedicated line on, on the day of collection, so that, the intent was that you, you could have someone to the maximum extent that's practicable answer the phone from the hauler on that day so that they can timely respond to customer service issues.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? None from the board. Any other public comment before we call for a vote? Is there anyone online? Commissioner Hodges, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to say that I do appreciate your comments. I appreciate anyone who writes to us and lets us know how they feel, because we're only as good as what our residents are telling us, and that's how we base our, our decisions. But we're paying a lot for this service. We're paying a lot, and whoever gets the bid tonight, we will hold you to it. We want good service for our residents, so thank you.
Dave, there are no other comments or questions at this time. Do we have a motion to award the contract for residential municipal solid waste collection, disposal, and recycling services contract commencing January 1st, 2024?
I make a motion, JP Mascaro, five years.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Congratulations, and we look forward to working with you and our community.
You are up to the task. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Good evening. Moving on to Agenda Item 8B, we have a motion requesting permission to proceed with the purchase of two trucks from CoStar's for Public Works Department, and I'll ask our Director of Operations, Herb Bender, to present this item.
Yes, Public Works is respectfully asking permission to move forward with the purchase of two Ford F-350 pickup trucks. These trucks will come with a new eight-and-a-half-foot plow. The price for both trucks is $122,400. Both trucks will be purchased under the CoStar's contract. We did apply for an LSA grant for both trucks, but we were denied. The two pickup trucks that are going to come out of the fleet and be sold on municipal public auction are a 2011 Ford F-350 with almost 90,000 miles and a truck that is a 2012 Ford F-250 with almost 85,000 miles. Both of these trucks will not pass inspection next year due to mechanical issues that have the undercarriage rusting. One of them has a bad front-end suspension problem, so they will not, we cannot legally put an inspection sticker in the window.
Thank you, Herb. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
I do have a quick question, Herb. Is the plow included in this price?
Yes, yes.
Yep. And it was budgeted.
Yes, it was budgeted for $122,400.
Public comment or question? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion to approve said motion?
So moved.
A second. Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 8C, we have a motion requesting permission to reject the bid regarding the Brickyard Road wall demolition project. Again, I'll ask our Director of Operations, Herb Bender, to present.
All right. Two bids were received and opened on Thursday, August 31st, 2023, for the Brickyard Road, Brickyard Road retaining wall demolition project. This, but, this was budgeted, advertised in local publication as required by law. Thirty potential bidders downloaded and received documents from the Penn Bid website. This is the second bid put on the street to remove a retaining wall from the side of a home on Brickyard Road for drainage purposes, which could potentially force the wall into the home. The result for the first bids were determined by the township as non-responsive due to the bidders did not include in their response a plan to take the wall down and not submitting the required forms. We are once again requesting the board reject both bids as being non-responsive. The same two companies bid, Semol Escavating and Ben Washington LLC. Semol Escavating did not attend the mandatory pre-bid meeting, which was clearly stated in our legal advertisement and instructions to the bidders. Ben Washington LLC, again, did not submit a written plan on how they would accomplish the demolition of the wall, also a requirement in our bid specification. Due to the township failing to award a contract, again, the Public Works Department will move forward with the project and complete the wall demolition in-house. The township manager has confirmed that the township's liability insurance policy will cover the scope of the demolition by way of township insurance policies, which does not exclude explosion hazards, collapse hazards, or underground property damage. Just so you do feel comfortable voting on this, I did take the Public Works operators up there are very skilled operators. We do have, if this is voted for us to deny and Public Works to move in, I do have an excavator already reserved, which we can cancel with no cost for September 11th. We are going to move in. We have talked to the homeowner. We are thinking we can have this wall out in two to three days.
Very good, Herb. Thank you. Just a quick question, once this wall is removed, will something else be built in its place?
No, we will, the public workforce forces that are there are going to regrade, and we're going to do stuff to the road so another retaining wall will not be needed. So we are going to look, there's $250,000 budgeted for this project, so we will come under budget significantly with Public Works doing the full project.
Very good. Thank you. Questions from the board?
I have a quick question. Oh, did you have? Okay. All right. Is it going to affect any of the landscaping or the grass or anything on that resident's property? Or is this on the road?
There, there's blacktop butted right against the wall. The resident that lives there had asked when we pulled the wall out if we could pull the bushes. He actually sent me pictures today. He cut them down. He asked if we could just get rid of them. I said it's not a problem.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Commissioner Osborn?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Herb, would this require or benefit from an engineering review? I'm not talking about taking the wall down, but the, you know, the modification. I'll stop.
Yes. We have met with the homeowner multiple times, me and Tony. The homeowner does not want a wall rebuilt. We did look at options. They will be on site while we are pulling the wall, so we do have an engineer there. If they think our plan is not safe, we will be with, they will have someone there to steer us in a different direction, and then they will be on site while we do the grading to make sure we are not flooding anyone out.
Is this wall actually on the developer's, I mean, the owner's, homeowner's property, or is it in the right of way?
It's in the right of way. Yes.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Are there any public comment on this agenda item? Online? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion to approve said motion to reject the bid for Brickyard Road wall demolition?
So moved.
Thank you.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Herb.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item 8D, consideration of approval of construction inspection agreement for Jordan Creek Greenway segments 41 through 45. I'll ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to present.
Thank you. So South Whitehall Township has received a million dollars in funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, Transportation Alternative Set-Aside Program, specifically to construct segments 41 to 45 of the Jordan Creek Greenway from Lap Road to Weir Mill Road and Cover Bridge Park. The township is preparing to release this project for public bid in October 2023 with anticipated construction starting in early '24. We are required by PennDOT to have third-party inspection services on-site during construction, and we must have these services under contract prior to release of the construction bid. So as of March 2023, the estimated cost for the overall construction is approximately $1,005,000. With the uncertainty of material costs and construction labor, staff is of the opinion that additional funding probably should be secured for anticipated overages. So we are, we did seek a 2024 DCNR grant in the amount of $200,000. We don't anticipate to hear back on that grant until the next month or so. But for purposes of this evening, construction inspection services for the project were originally estimated to be between $150,000 and $250,000. That, that expense cannot be included in the $1,005,000 construction estimate, but can be supported by TASA funding. So we don't have enough grant funding to pay for the inspection cost services if, if the project comes in exactly as, as estimated. So at this point, the board needs to make a decision on whether you would approve the construction inspection services with traffic planning- inspection services with traffic planning and design in the amount of $140,445.36. So, if you will recall, three firms had submitted statements of interest packages. Those were Michael Baker, CDRM, and Traffic Planning and Design. The Township evaluated traffic planning and design. We notified PennDOT that we had selected traffic planning and design as the preferred transportation construction manager and transportation construction inspector for this project, as we had dealt with them previously. PennDOT then confirmed that selection, and PennDOT's requirements then dictate them to submit rates for time, materials, and reimbursable expenses that are affixed and approved by PennDOT, not the Township. So, that's how we came to the $140,445.36 number. It was negotiated by PennDOT, and we asked a number of questions, and Township staff feels that that amount is reasonable in the context of this grant. So, we would request that action in the form of a motion to approve the agreement and to allow the project to move forward. But, however, I want to be very clear that we will need to budget for this inspection services cost in the '24 budget, because we don't know today as to how this is going to work out with the final bids for the project.
Thank you, Tom. So, regarding your last comment, would that be the total amount of the $140,445 that we would need to budget for?
Yes.
2024?
Yes, and now we're hopeful we'll get a grant in the interim, but I can't guarantee that as I sit here today.
And just an overall question of this project, we were granted, approved for a grant in the amount of $1,500,000?
No, $1 million.
Total $1 million.
Yeah.
So, we're over that now already, now, so $5,000 with that and $140,000 for the inspection. Is that something that could have these fees been incorporated into the TASA grant if the bid hadn't come in higher than a million?
Yeah, if the bid comes under a million, then we can incorporate it into the grant. Yes.
But those are unknowns once?
Those are unknowns.
We've started as well. Very good. Thank you. Are there any board comments or questions on the agenda item? Any public comment or question? Hearing and seeing none. Do we have a motion to approve said motion for the Jordan Creek Greenway segments 41 through 45?
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Agenda Item 8E, we have a motion requesting permission to proceed with the purchase of four Chevrolet Tahos from Whitmoyer Auto Group, Co-Stars for Police Department. Oscar, Police Chief Glenn Dorni, to present this.
Thank you, and good evening, Commissioners. Police Department is in the process of fleet upgrades and are requesting authorization to purchase four new patrol vehicles. One vehicle will be a sergeant patrol supervisor vehicle, two will be frontline patrol vehicles, and one will be an unmarked patrol vehicle. This is necessary due to an aging fleet, which that needs to be replaced and taken out of service due to excessive mileage and safety concerns. Quotes for the vehicles are obtained through Whitmoyer Auto Group, utilizing Co-Stars pricing, requesting the purchase of four Chevrolet Tahoe police package vehicles. Marked vehicle cost, Co-Stars cost is $48,000 with an upfitting cost of $21,121.80 for a total cost of $69,121.80. Unmarked vehicle, Co-Stars price is also $48,000 with an upfitting cost of $22,935.54 for a total cost of $70,934.54, with the overall total for the four vehicles is $278,394.94. The budget line item, we currently have $258,871.76 in the Police Capital account. We also received a local share account grant for $41,967 for a total of $300,838.76 available for purchase, and there will be in excess of $22,537.82 remaining in the account after that.
Very good. Thank you, Chief, for sending that information for the board this evening. I'll open it up to see if the board has any comments or questions. Well, I guess I'll start with one. As I reviewed the information, both for Public Works and for this request, I brought to mind a question. Township-wide, fleet-wide, do we have a policy for vehicle purchases? And the parameters that I was thinking of was, do we have a three- and five-year projected plan forward? Do we have a plan to prioritize vehicle purchases to assure that we have consistent branding, appearance, logos, with a defined plan for disposing of vehicles? I've thought about the standards that we could adopt, that we would use during budget season, that would provide for the full cost of vehicles, including insurance, fuel efficiency and fuel cost reliability, life expectancy, and also addressing reassignment of vehicles within the township and possible disposition at auction. This came to my mind as we were discussing refuse, and we went forward with a plan, but at the same time, we were looking at, how can we approach this in a more comprehensive way to look for improvements, not just doing what we've always done? And that's some of the comments that have been running through my mind as I've reviewed this. I recall during budget season last fall, the request was made to the board and approved for three Ford Explorers, and I personally am in support of maintaining at this time what we currently have for our fleet, which is what was approved in our budget. But I'm open to discussion with the board on their thoughts as well.
I have a question, Chief. Similar along the lines like Commissioner Kelly. Over the last several days, I've been in touch with six police departments and the state police. Every one drives Ford Explorers. And I told them who I was, just in general conversation, and the one detective who drives one made a comment, and I said, no, we're looking at Tahos possibly. And he said, oh, you guys must be, have a lot of money, which we didn't get into it at that point. But why are we not looking at Ford Explorers when the state police, Bridgeport, Norristown, Plymouth Township, or the several of the ones I've talked to personally, all have them? What's wrong with Ford Explorers, which is what we have, when they're good enough for everybody else but not good enough for South Whitehall Township?
I wouldn't say they're good enough for everybody else and not good enough for us. We've had a lot of maintenance issues with the Fords. Herb can attest to the mechanics. The water pump goes on pretty much every one we have. We've blown an engine. A lot of departments are getting away from Fords because of that problem.
Going to what?
Going to, some departments have gone to the Dodge. Whitehall Township has gotten rid of all of their Fords, driving either Durangos or the Chargers. Upper McConge is going to, I think they went to Chargers. We have state police also driving Chargers. We have Upper Salkin going to Tahos. Cata Saco Police Department has gone to Tahos. Palmer Township Police Department has gone to Tahos. So, it's pretty much across the board. And if you look at the cost, we got the quote yesterday for the Fords that we currently drive, and they're $1,000 more expensive than the Tahos.
But cost of ownership of a Ford is, I've owned both, and my cost of ownership on a Ford Explorer was substantially less than my Tahoe gas mileage. But if I've had a problem with a vehicle, which, as you know, there were several police officers parked in front of my house, and I've talked to them about their cars, and they said they've had problems with them. But if I have a problem with my car, on any of my vehicles consistently, I'm back at that dealership complaining as to, I got a problem with a vehicle, and I want it resolved, not, I mean, so I don't understand why aren't we doing the same thing if we have a problem with a vehicle? There's a point where it's out of warranty.
We do that.
But I understand we're getting extended warranties on these.
Yeah.
So.
It's more so the room in the vehicle is what the officers, if Sergeant Beaumont could stand up.
I don't mean to be rude, but I need to take this call.
We have officers that, with the amount of equipment that we have in our cars, it is a very tight fit in the Ford Explorers. We have computers, we have consoles with two radios, speed timing devices, cameras in your face, there's blind spots in those cars. The, I would say, the vehicle, the powertrain, probably two to three years ago, was much better than what the powertrain is now. We buy the base model Ford Explorer. We don't buy turbos, we don't buy the hybrids. When you step on the gas in one of these current vehicles, it essentially dies. It hesitates, and then it starts to go. I consider that a safety issue for my officers. I had to drive one of them when my car was down, and I could tell you it was very uncomfortable, and it was a horrible ride, and it had absolute zero pickup to respond to things. So, that is why we wanted to go and look at something different. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback on the Tahos from other departments. They have increasing, increased braking systems, safer for the officer, safer for our public. There's more room in the vehicle that the officers can actually put all of the equipment. If you look in the back of one of our Ford Explorers currently, it is a menagerie of equipment everywhere. There's no good place to fit the equipment that we have. The room in a Tahoe is much more considerable to be able to put the equipment that we need to do our jobs that is in an organized manner. That is essentially what it boils down to. These officers are in these cars for 12 hours a day. We all, as Township employees, have sit-to-stand desks. We have a comfort zone in our office. These officers are crammed in those vehicles for 12 hours a day. I think it's incumbent upon myself to give them the best working environment that they could possibly have. And when you look at the price, essentially being the same across the vehicle, and from the issues that we've had recently with the Fords, I thought it was a great opportunity, after doing the research with other departments, that they all are very positive on the new Tahos. So, we wanted to give that a try.
Okay, so, yeah, I have a couple of questions. First, I want to say that I, myself, and this entire board have always supported the police. We want you to be safe, have what you need to stay safe, and keep our community safe for that. But I do have some questions because I also vowed to keep our taxpayers and their taxpayer money safe as well. So, there was a line in Page 2, and it said, "Our mechanics feel the Ford vehicles have more mechanical issues." And I was just wondering, what mechanics, and what are they comparing it to? Because if they are indeed comparing it to a Tahoe, we don't have a Tahoe, we don't know long-term what the problems will be and what the reliability is. Just looking at Consumer Reports and looking side-by-side with a Tahoe and an Explorer, they're about same with reliability, 52 on a 49. But I was just wondering, what mechanics, what, they made that statement, what is the comparison? What are they comparing it to?
It was told to me that we used to have Tahos. They thought they were a better vehicle. And it was told to me by one of our mechanics that if you look at what we drive for our personal vehicles, it should be an indication of what we would rather work on and what we think is a better vehicle. And both mechanics drive GM products. That's what was told to me. So, that's why that's thrown in there.
Okay. I have another question. Commissioner Kelly, I liked your idea of the fleet analysis. And I look back to our last budget in 2023 for the Police Department capital requests, and it said, "From the chief, Herb Keith worked on a fleet management plan over the last couple of years. We're almost to the point where we can start to replace one or two vehicles a year in the future." I was wondering where we stood on that? Is that continuing? Is that over? Do we have it? Do you have something you could give us?
It's continuing. Part of this is our SRO fleet is still old. As a matter of fact, during our drill, one of the vehicles broke down on the ride to the drill. God forbid that happens in real life. But we're, in order to do that swap, to take some more reliable vehicles and put those in those places, would be to purchase these vehicles and take the 2007s out of the fleet and get rid of them to maintain a proper fleet. There's also a fleet plan that was proposed, which would be a fleet lease program that's attached to this as well. And that ultimately is the long-term goal for proper fleet maintenance that would be a maintained vehicle fleet that is recycled essentially every five years, and it would save the Township approximately $1 million over the course of 10 years.
But then we're locked into that price, right?
For five years, yes.
And is that something we really want to do? I would think that, of course, you want a vehicle that, you want to get it before it really depreciates, but yet, you're not seeing the true life of that vehicle if you're constantly trading it in. And those vehicles, if they are as good as you're saying they are, those Tahos should last forever. So, they should last a long, not forever, but a long time. So, what would the sense be in trading them in every three to five years on the lease? You know, why not let them have their life, of course?
Police vehicles are not personal vehicles. They're not driven the same. They're not, they run essentially 12 hours a day. Regardless of how many miles are on them, you have three times as many hours on the engine. So, if we think that we're going to get a police car that's going to be a reliable police vehicle with 200,000 miles on it, it's not going to happen. The whole point of the fleet program with the leasing program would be to, before that vehicle starts to nickel and dime you on maintenance costs, you trade that vehicle back in for more than what the buyout is on it. You gain money that you put back into the leasing program, and you constantly have upgraded vehicles. That's essentially the principle behind that.
Okay, great. And I just want to clarify. I'm not trying to challenge you. I'm asking you because I want to know. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from any of the board at this time? Commissioner Osborne, yes?
Chief, I just want to make sure I understand. So, the budget that was approved for 2023 will still have in that account approximately $22,000 if this request this evening is approved, if the budget was approved.
Would you factor in the grant? Correct. We didn't have the grant at the time we did the budget.
Right.
We applied after that, and we received that $41,000, almost $42,000.
Right. So, the direction from the board, or the approval of the board for this particular light item in the budget has already been approved. Is that correct?
For the purchase of vehicles?
Yes.
In the budget, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, it was for four vehicles, four patrol and one for detectives. But this would allow us to transfer a vehicle that's currently in our fleet that has 50,000 miles on it, turn that into a detective vehicle to extend that life of that vehicle versus using it as a frontline patrol vehicle for the next two years, and now all of a sudden we get no value. We get another, potentially, five years of value out of it doing that.
Okay, yes. So, just to be clear. So, the budget that was approved by the Commissioners for last year's budget, your request is within that budget, and you want to now take advantage or use the budget that you were given at the time?
With the grant, yes, correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Osborne, no offense, but I think it's a play on words. That's true. It all was true, but was also, we're not questioning the dollars. I think we're questioning going to the Tahoe versus the Ford Explorer, which is what's in the fleet. I just.
Right, we're going from a midsize.
That's more of the.
I understand that, and I perhaps don't have the background that the other Commissioners on the board have in terms of what is appropriate for a police vehicle in performing their duty. So, I do, you know, I will admit, I do not have that expertise. So, thank you.
Let's have a quick question to our Township Manager. I know we were going to have a meeting with the Police Department and discuss things. Commissioner Osborne and myself unexpectedly couldn't make it, and the meeting was canceled. Do you anticipate having that meeting? And secondly, if we could have that meeting, could this topic be then put, brought as to the forefront more than it is tonight?
The answer is yes. We could certainly have that meeting. We would have to have it ASAP, because whether it's Explorers, Tahos, you know, if you want to lock in getting any vehicles for this year, we'd have to do that right away.
And by that, you mean within the next month?
Within the next couple of weeks, two to three weeks.
All right. So, I guess I would direct the Commissioners to ask if that's a possibility.
I'm certainly open to that meeting if the board is.
I'm open to it, obviously.
And to clarify, that's an informational session for the board. It's not a public meeting. It's, which we're allowed to do under the Sunshine Act.
I understand that.
Yeah, just for anyone listening on the public, I just want to.
I understand.
Yeah.
Any other board comments this evening? Any other board comments this evening?
Commissioner Kelly, just, just for clarification, the, on the agenda, it's listed as a motion requesting permission to proceed with the purchase for Chevrolet Tahos. So are you concluding this topic?
No, I'm continuing to ask. Commissioner Roth had not made any comment yet. I'm curious if he had any comment onto the agenda item.
Okay, thank you. Before we conclude this, I would like the opportunity to comment on this motion.
Of course.
Thank you.
If Commissioner Osborne wants to make his comment first, that's perfectly fine. Okay. I'm certainly open to, we are able to have that meeting within the next few weeks to flush this topic out. But I'll just make one constructive comment about fleet management as a whole. And I know Chief Dorni, you and I have spoke about this one-on-one in the past. In developing a fleet management plan, I think something we should look at, and we talked about this, is not just looking at the fleet, the macro level, how many cars we have, how many cars we're going to get per year, but also at the micro level, sort of when a car comes in, almost put together a plan for that specific vehicle. If the cars, you know, and again, I don't have the knowledge or the specifics for, for the life of any vehicle, Ford or, or General Motors. But when a vehicle comes in, you know, we can assume that, you know, all L-sequel, that car will last us for three years as a patrol vehicle. Then it can be moved to, to an SRO or detective. And then it eventually can be phased out of the fleet. But so my, getting back to my constructive comment for fleet management as a whole, I think it would be a good idea to have a plan almost for each individual car. That way that the fleet almost manages itself. So they will, we get to the end of the life of a car. Hopefully with what we expected that car to last in terms of the number of years, that there's a replacement waiting in the wings. And that way too, it prevents us from having cars that are sitting around too long, not being used, or cars just looking at the chart from 2006, 2007, or 2008. And we're now in 2023. So just a comment, if we do decide to have that information gathering session of the board, that, you know, if the department would like to bring options like that to us or maybe just information about the life of a car, how long it can be used on patrol and SRO or another purpose, that would be, I think it would be beneficial. And I know that would certainly help educate me on this topic as we look to move forward in a way we get to the point where, like I said, the fleet manages itself.
It can be a challenge as soon as a police car gets hit by somebody else too. It gets thrown out the window. So an engine blows, transmission fails or something. So we have a general plan. We've talked about the general plan. So we can certainly do that, but we can't say car 303 is going to be car 342 in seven years from now.
Correct.
But we can say that vehicles that are in the best shape after the five years of service that they've done frontline, we can transition those into SRO cars. Or when command staff vehicles hit that six to seven year mark, they become detective vehicles. That is the plan that we did put in place and we talked about. So that's what we'd like to implement moving forward.
And of course, any data you can provide. And again, I know that the switch to Tahos is somewhat of a newer movement among departments. But if there are any departments that have been using them for four or five years, what feedback they have, you know, the, the life of a Tahoe, so to speak, barring any other circumstances versus the life of, of other vehicles. So if you could just provide that data to us, it seems like the board wants to move towards that direction of a, of an information gathering session, that information would be greatly appreciated.
And to that, I appreciate that comment about other municipalities that may have them in use. It'd be helpful to have one if we're able to locate a municipality that is of similar size and 12-hour shifts to get a sense of the longevity and the differences so the board can compare.
So basically, would that mean you're looking at a cost analysis of that vehicle?
Correct.
Which?
Cost of ownership, long-term, safety, that are.
Yeah, yeah, I'd be open to that. I mean, this, I don't think it's a dead deal. I just think it needs more discussion and more understanding on, on our part.
Commissioner Osborne, did you have a comment to make?
Don't have a comment, but I would like to move to approve the request for the permission to proceed with the purchase of four Chevrolet Tahos from Whitmore Auto Group as proposed on the agenda.
Motion on the floors or second?
Second.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Is that a?
I'm opposed.
Oppose, oppose, and I'm opposed. So motion fails.
I'd just like to make a comment in response to Commissioner Osborne's. I don't think we're shooting down, well, we did, we voted down. But I think we'd, I'd like to propose an informational session, which I discussed with the township manager.
And to clarify my earlier statements, you need to hold that and make a decision in the next.
And make a decision afterwards. Correct.
Correct.
Instead of giving us information quite a bit on a Friday to digest all this. So I mean, that's, that's all we're saying. At least that's what I'm saying.
That's what I said as well. It's not a done deal. I want more information.
Correct. More data that is available for the board. So is the board in agreement to direct staff?
Actually, Herb, can we get data from the fire department Tahos to see if we can get their maintenance schedules well? Since they're running them as well? Since we work on their vehicles now?
Yes, I can see where we did this year for them.
Okay.
Very good. Moving on to agenda item F, we have a motion requesting permission to adopt the newly certified civil service promotional list for the position of sergeant. And Chief Dorni, if you'd present as well?
Yes, the police department has conducted civil service promotional testing for the rank of sergeant and all aspects of the testing process have been completed to include the written exam and oral examination. The Civil Service Commission has certified the eligibility, eligibility list on Thursday, August 10th, 2023. I'm requesting the Board of Commissioners to make a motion to adopt the newly certified civil service promotional list for sergeant. We do have one current vacancy for sergeant, which we plan on filling later this year in either October or November when manpower hopefully gets increased.
Very good, thank you. Other any comments or questions from the board on this agenda item? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, I have a motion to approve said motion.
Motion.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Agenda item 9A, Boards and Commissions informational items. Oscar Township Manager, Tom Petrucci, to review.
Okay, upcoming meetings will be posted on the township website and are held here at the Township Building unless otherwise noted. Monday, September 11th, 7:00 PM, Public Safety Commission. Monday, September 11th, 7:00 PM, Parks and Recreation Board. You, you will be able to participate virtually on either meeting. Tuesday, September 12th, 6:00 PM, Crime Watch Meeting. Wednesday, September 13th, 10:00 AM, Civil Service Commission. Thursday, September 14th, 7:00 PM, Emergency Management Services Meeting, which is actually held at the Sotonia Operations Center. Friday, September 15th, 7:00 PM, Movie in the Park. Wednesday, September 20th, 7:00 PM, Board of Commissioners.
If I could just jump in, the Civil Service Commission was actually postponed until the 20th at the same time. Sorry, that didn't make the, the list.
Yeah, sorry about that. Yes, Wednesday, September 20th, 10:00 AM.
Very good, thank you. Moving on to direction discussion, agenda item 10A, we have review of procurement card policy draft revised. I'll ask Tom Petrucci to again present.
So as discussed, at the August 16th Board of Commissioners meeting, the township is evaluating a procurement card policy. Procurement card is a type of company charge card used for smaller purchases to, to achieve greater cost efficiency, control, convenience. They're also known as purchasing cards, P-cards. So basically, we, credit cards that are procurement cards are used by township employees and then paid for by invoice with township funds. The procurement card will issue payments to pay within days while providing monthly invoicing to the township. To clarify, procurement cards would only be authorized for the following types of purchases. Emergency purchases, online subscriptions or dues, conference registrations, training where the vendor will not allow the township to be billed, and hotel accommodations with the township to make every effort to pay the reservation full ahead of time. So Herb Bender, Donna Zacharou, and I had worked on the procurement policy. We took the feedback from the board from the last meeting and made some changes. So there was a question at the last meeting for the $5,000 per card limit. We determined that that was appropriate based on the programs where we would use the card. So each card would have a limit of $5,000. The end user would be made to be responsible for using the card and incurring unauthorized charges. The end user will need to repay the township within 48 hours or the amount would be deducted from his or her paycheck. The township can check online to monitor purchases during the time period that the cards are assigned. If the bank believes that a fraudulent charge has occurred, an email can be sent to the township as well as a text message. Just to be clear though, every expenditure doesn't result in a, an email. So it would just be when, when a fraudulent charge is a possibility or is flagged by the bank. The policy has also been revised to confirm that employees must sign out the cards by way of a form approved by the Finance Director, which is also enclosed, and then turned back to the Finance Director. The form now requires the employee to identify the purpose or need for the card and the length of time that the card is going to be used for. Cards will be issued as files, Police Department Two, Parks and Recreation One, Community Development One, Herb Bender One, and Tom Petrucci One. After vetting potential vendors, Township Executive and Finance Planner Snell are recommending that the township, if you're inclined to purchase, or I'm sorry, utilize procurement cards in the manner suggested, engage the service of the Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust as the card issuer. If there's any questions, we're just asking for direction discussion. And then would move forward at the, at the next meeting with, with adopting the policy and, and executing any agreements with Pliget if you're inclined to move in that direction.
Thank you for revising and bringing this back to the board for review. I just had one minor suggestion on the employee P-card agreement letter. Six, if the card is lost or stolen, I will immediately notify Pliget and the Township Director of Finance, Director of Operations, or Township Manager. I wondered if you should, the Township Manager should be included in the mandatory notification so that you're aware if there's an issue.
Yeah, I think what you could do is change the, the or to an and and just have all of us notified.
Okay.
So, because, you know, in case someone's out or makes more sense.
Right, and it's on the other temporary card user.
Yeah.
It's on that one as well. Thank you. Are there any comments from the board on this draft? Commissioner Osborne?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Tom, I think you did an excellent job and staff did an excellent job in responding to the, the feedback that you got from commissioners, and I think this is a great product now. Thank you.
Glad to hear that.
Any other comments? Any public comment on this agenda item? Nothing online? Do you have what you need from us, Tom?
I do. We'll come back for the final adoption and execution of the agreement with Pliget.
Excellent, very good.
Thank you for the feedback.
Of course. Moving on to 10B. We have for direction discussion, Southway Hall Township Local Services Tax Collection Agreement Notification of Termination Received from Parkland School District. And Tom, you would present?
Yeah, I would, yes, I would respectfully request that the board table this item pending receipt of additional information.
Does the board have any comment on tabling? We have a motion to table.
Motion.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Agenda item C, interviews for current vacancies and expired terms on Southway Hall Boards and Commissions. Tom, you could address that.
Yes. So basically, the, the policy that you have right now for appointing any vacancies to any expired terms or commissions, which you adopted earlier this year, requires us that we notify you of said vacancies, which we've done so. The next step in the process would be to schedule interviews. So we're not asking you to do that right now, but if you could please coordinate the potential dates with, with Tracy Fennell and myself, you know, so we can try to do that in a timely manner.
So between you and Tracy, you could maybe get an email out to the board with some suggested dates and we'll coordinate.
Yes.
Very good, excellent. Moving on to agenda item 11, old business, none. Moving on to 12, courtesy of the floor, again, opportunity for any member of the public to adjust the board on non-agenda items. Is there anyone present who'd like to speak to the board? Anyone online? No. Moving on to 13, motion to authorize payment of invoices and disbursements. We have a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. We have no executive session scheduled and I need a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.